Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 6 o'clock and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, February 8, 2021. Prior to our roll call this evening, I would like to remind anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda, to simply fill out a speaker request form. Our executive assistant Ruth Scott in the back of the room has... Give those to her, give that to her, and she'll get it up to me and we'll get you on at the appropriate time. For those of you who have been here before, you know you have the option of either waiting until the item is on the agenda for you to make your remarks, or if you'd like to get home a little bit early or whatever, you're more than welcome to speak to your item under public participation, which is D on your agenda. With that being said, first of all, before we proceed, I would like to make sure that two members of our party tonight are on the Zoom and can hear. One is our second ward alderman Bill Fanoukian. Bill, can you hear us?
Jerry, I hear you just fine.
Very good, thank you. And Lynn Fazekas, our city clerk, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Very good, thank you. So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I would ask Clerk Fazekas for a roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Fanoukian.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here. Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you very much. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda tonight is approval of tonight's agenda. Unless any member of the city council would like to have any items added or deleted from the agenda, I would entertain the motion to approve the agenda. Are there any deletions or additions to tonight's agenda? Alderman Verbic.
Mayor, I would like to remove J1. This has already been voted down, and no means no.
Okay, your request is to remove agenda item...
J1.
J1, which is the Resolution 2021-010, approving a laundromat liquor license.
Correct.
I would consider that then an amendment to the agenda. Any discussion? Any second to Alderman Verbic's...
Second.
...indication that we remove that item from tonight's agenda?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we simply remove that item from the agenda. Alderman Morris wanted to say something, and then Alderman Favor. Alderman Morris.
So, can you hear me? Is this projecting me? Okay. So, I ask that this be revisited because I thought it was unusual for no votes, for something to be entirely voted down with no public discussion on it. And so, because I was surprised that things went that way, I was eager to hear all of councils' feedback on why they voted that way, and I just wanted to give council the opportunity to communicate that to the community. And when we vote yea in favor of things, I don't feel that there's a need for us to explain ourselves because I think the assumption is that we are voting in alignment with what has been presented on the agenda, and it means that we agree with what we're seeing there. So I think the value of discussing this today is simply to explain the background behind our decision previously.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, a second to delete an item from the agenda. We've had one comment. Tony, did you want to say something else? Okay. First of all then, we will vote on the amendment, and the amendment simply removes item J1 from the agenda. Is that clear? City attorney, is that clear?
Yes.
Roll call.
Morris.
No.
Fanoukian.
No.
Smith.
No.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
No.
I have four nays and three yays.
Is that a defeated item then?
Correct. The motion to remove item J1 has been defeated.
Has been defeated. Okay. Now, with that being said, is there a... So that item is still on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukian, seconded by Alderman Morris, that we approve tonight's agenda as printed. Any discussion? Roll call.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
No.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
No.
Smith.
No.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
No.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I, one nay.
The agenda for tonight's meeting is approved as written. Now we move to item D, public participation. Any one here in the room who has indicated they'd like to speak to an item may speak Okay, before I get these too confused, our executive assistant gave me several new items, and I want to make sure that we have these in the proper order. None of these indicate where these people want to speak. So I'm going to assume that you don't mind, and I'm going to put you at the bottom. Is that... Is it okay? I've got a request here from Mike Embry, from Dwayne Brown, from John Nelson, from Todd Hanson, and from Jim Mason, with no indication as to where you want to speak on the agenda. You want to speak now, under public participation?
You're in the item.
Hmm?
Item J1.
Okay. Mike Embry, thank you. You want to speak to J1?
Yes.
What item?
J1.
J1.
All those folks that I just indicated, you all want to speak on that one item?
Yes.
Anybody not? Okay. And none of you want to speak under public participation, is that correct? Sorry for the confusion, but I wanted to make sure that you get a chance to speak where on the agenda you'd like to speak. Now, we do have one person who has indicated to us online that they would like to speak, and I do have a letter, but I also see that that person is on Zoom tonight, and that is JJ Wet, 127 Tilton Park Drive, DeKalb, Illinois. JJ, would you like to read your letter, or would you like me to read your letter for you?
I can read it if you want me to.
Your choice.
Yeah, I can go ahead and read it.
Go ahead and read your letter.
I actually didn't even have it pulled up because I wasn't sure. So if you give me two seconds to pull it up, I can do so. So I... For the opportunity. All right. With that said, good evening, council, and thank you for braving the cold weather once again to get to the library and represent us all. With the current pandemic going on, homelessness is on the rise throughout the country and here in DeKalb. This epidemic is going to affect our entire community the longer the current pandemic goes on. With thousands of people losing their jobs daily, we will begin to see more and more people going without shelter. Over this past weekend, we have had some of the coldest temperatures we have seen all year. While warming centers are available for the community, most of them closed overnight and leave people without shelter to the brutal temperatures outside. It was reported to me that there were at least five people that the community knew about who had to endure the brutal temperatures overnight. While we need to protect our most vulnerable during the harshest times, we need to be proactive in how we deal with the homelessness situation going forward. I believe that as a community, we can come together to solve this issue through innovative ways of working together and thinking outside the box. One of my suggestions would be to pull a few nonprofits together to construct a worker collaborative where people without shelter can work as well as live. Not only would this help with the homelessness issue, it would also help with the several food insecurity that DeKalb residents face. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wet. I appreciate your comment. Okay, let's move right along now. We have no public presentations this evening. We have no mayoral appointments. We do have a consent agenda. All items on this consent agenda are usually enacted by one motion unless a item is asked to be removed from the consent agenda. I see nobody indicating that, so I would like to entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda for the following items. Number one, minutes of the January 25, 2021, regular city council meeting. Number two, minutes of the October 30, 2020, joint review board meeting. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through February 8, 2021, in the amount of I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Morris. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukian.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved as printed. There are no public hearings this evening, nor any special considerations. So moving right along, we are now under resolutions, item J on the agenda. Number one, Resolution 2021-010, approving a laundromat liquor license for South 4th Street Mega Laundromat LLC located at 1387 South 4th Street with supplemental licensure for video gaming. This was one of those resolutions that we have had a request to be brought back for reconsideration, so I think it would be appropriate, would it not, City Attorney Donahue, to ask for a motion for reconsideration?
Yes, correct.
Okay. May I have a motion to reconsider this resolution item?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ald...
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second from Alderman Fanoukian. Now, prior to asking city manager Nicholas for any remarks, I think now is the time, would it not be city attorney Donahue to hear any members of the public who would like to speak to this item?
Yes, Mayor, it would. The issue before the council now would only be reconsideration. There would not be any decision on the ultimate substance of the item that's listed here. You would only get to that item that's listed here if you did vote positively to reconsider it. Then this item would come up again, and the council would be able to have a vote on that. But I think it's appropriate at this point to have full discussion on motion reconsideration, including public.
Okay, and as is the case that we usually have, we have speakers, who anybody who would like to speak to this, and we have a number of folks tonight, will then offer our city manager Nicholas any comments he'd like to make, and then we would vote on this item to reconsider. Does that sound correct? Yes, Caratlin.
I have one question. So, if I understand correctly, when we vote on item J1, we are simply voting on whether or not we can discuss it? Or is it no?
What was the question? I can't understand you with that mask on.
I'm sorry.
Our city attorney explained it. What's before the council right now is a motion, seconded, to reconsider. So the council has to entertain the possibility of reconsidering the vote that was taken at the last regular meeting. If that's in the affirmative, and you decide you want to reconsider, then we need a main motion on the point that was before the council at the last meeting. So there are two steps here. Right now, we're in the first step, and this is for the council to determine, not for the city manager to comment. So you have a motion on the floor and a second. Now you're discussing the motion, which is to reconsider.
Right.
Ultimately, be a vote on that, Mayor, and you'll have to call for a vote and a roll call on that.
Does your feeling, city manager Nicholas, concur with what I heard from city attorney Donahue, that we can now have discussion?
Discussion on a motion to reconsider? And, oh, you mean as for the public?
Yes, okay.
Yes.
And they're not actually talking about reconsideration as much as they are talking about the context of the original...
I think there are people here to talk.
Right.
And if you decide not to reconsider, they will not be able to speak to that topic.
Right.
It's your choice.
Very good, all right. So I just want to be clear. Now, let me get my myriad of speaker requests. I've got two requests from Dwayne Brown. Dwayne, you want to speak on the same item?
Yes. No, I didn't get your request.
I've got one from...
I filled one out for him because we had a whole...
Oh, Sarah, okay. So that's why I would have two from Mike Embry and two from Dwayne Brown. I only have one from you, Sarah. You only filled out one for yourself. Okay. I'm going to try in my best manner to call these in the order that I think I had received them. So the first speaker is Mike Larson. And for you folks who are speaking, I'd ask you to come to the podium, and since you are well distant, I would ask you to either lower or remove your face mask. It's easier to understand. And I apologize, Alderman Morris, for not being able to hear you, but with that mask, I could not hear you. Plus, you're speaking into the microphone like this, and I can't see you. Okay, Mike, and again, let's keep...
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith. Mayor Smith, the resolution is not yet on the floor. I believe that we need to have a vote on the motion to reconsider first, and then put it on the floor, and then have the public comment.
That is not what I heard, city clerk Fazekas, from our city attorney. Is that correct, city attorney?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. People come out in 10-degree weather in a snowstorm to talk about a topic. I think we want to hear them.
Okay. Is the city council comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, then let's move forward. Three minutes or less, please, per speaker. Mr. Larson.
I came here in a sense to support Jim Mason's program for a building on the south side. He and I were business partners for 10 or 12 years, and we worked together well then, and I would work together with him now, and I'm just here to support him. Expansion in DeKalb, if you've ever... And I can't imagine anybody in this room that hasn't driven down 23 south of the toll way to see what's going on down there. There's going to be expansion, going to be a lot more people in town. That's good for us, I think. They'll be buying houses, spending money in various different ways, and I just think it's a good idea to support him.
Thank you. I like the length of your comments, Mike. Very nice. Okay, Sarah Whiting.
All right. So I have my PowerPoint. I kind of went through this back in August, I think, when we went through. But the proposal for our game, just so that you understand kind of what we're doing as a business plan. Our proposal for the Mega Grande Laundromat, it was established in 2015. It's about 8,500 square feet. The proposed area is only about 242 square feet. It's a small room that's only going to be gaming, and beer and wine would only be served in that area. 1387 South 4th Street, the current site plan, just showing where the building lays out in the parking lot that we have. The proposed gaming area would be where the blue arrow is up in the corner, just the small room in that area. Just some pictures of the laundromat and kind of showing you, this would be the front entrance. Walking in, the black doors there is where that room would be. The black room, just a little closer. Inside the room, just showing you that it is a smaller room. Proposed what it would look like, it would be all blacked out, so you can't really see inside of what's going on in there. And then this is just to kind of depict how small the room actually is. There is no extra room for additional tables. We won't be having like a social bar scene there. It is... Our main purpose is for gaming there because it was requested by our customers. Mega Grande Laundromat, we currently offer Wi-Fi, coin-operated massage chairs, cable TV, arcade games, and a relaxing environment. We're just looking for another amenity that our customers are requesting. Gaming will be located in a separate room. It will be closed off. It's already glassed in already, and the door will be shut. Only 21 and over will be allowed in. No children will be allowed. No beer will be allowed outside of that gaming room. Over the past six years now, almost six years, we have built a large clientele with laundromats. People like clean environments when they come to clean their clothes. We have people coming from up to 40 miles away to use our laundromat because it is upscale, it's nice, and we do offer a lot of amenities there. When they are in town, they are visiting other local businesses, so we are bringing those customers to DeKalb for other business in town. The liquor and gaming go hand in hand per the state. If we didn't have to have liquor, I mean, we would do it without it. The gaming is our main goal here. The only seating in the bar area, like I said before, is only the gaming. It's not going to be a socialized bar scene. There will... The only seating in the bar will be the gaming. There has been, to our knowledge, no other issues at the gaming facilities in town as far as like police presence or anything like that, so we don't see that being an issue either. Community impact, we don't see a whole lot of... We don't think there would be any negative impact on the community. Gamers are statistically not heavy drinkers. People come to play, they don't come to drink. The only positive impact would be additional income from those people that are coming, that we are bringing to town from up to 40 miles away. That extra income for the city and our laundromat. Advertising, we have been advertising for the past six months, six to eight months, in all of these different areas. I won't list them. But in the Chicagoland area, St. Charles, Rockford, Rock Falls, Macomb, we've been advertising DeKalb. Our kind of slogan for DeKalb is "All roads lead to DeKalb," to try to get people to come, not only for our laundromat, but also for our Mason Indoor Golf that we just opened, and then also our rental properties. So we do try to promote DeKalb in all of our ads as well. We are asking for the reconsideration on this liquor license now that you have a better idea of what we're looking for. We're not looking to have a bunch of drunk people at our laundromat. That's not what we're looking for. But let's work together and show the citizens of DeKalb that the council is business friendly. Thank you for your time, and Jim will answer any questions you have when he gets up here.
Thank you, Sarah. I allowed you a few extra minutes there only because you do represent the petitioner on this, and I thought that would be only fair. Michael Embry.
Thank you, Mayor.
First of all, I was kind of shocked when I saw the report from two weeks ago on the newspaper about this being postponed or not voted on. This takes me back to the time of Anne Marie and Dean Friedersworth, who was not a business-friendly community, and we need to be more business-friendly. Just to set everybody's record straight, entertainment centers or social centers like the laundromat, adding the bar and whatever, it's not new. It started in 1982 in Ames, Iowa, where the laundromat had a coin-op game machine, which for some of you younger ones wouldn't know this, but I know the mayor would. They had Pac-Man and a few games like that, but they also had a bar there, so it became a social entertainment center. And according to the materials we received from Ames, Iowa, it was never a problem. It was a great success for the city there. As far as the people concerned about the liquor in that area, 25 years ago, this council changed the liquor law, and I was a member of the commission at that time, to include a new license at Sullivan's Grocery Store, which was the old Eagle Store, which is the same location that Mr. Mason is asking for. They changed and violated the current law, and I'm thinking, well, okay, they changed the law for their own benefit. This is not being business-friendly. This is not being business-concerned. It's more of a discrimination than not. As far as the issues, I know one of the council members feels strongly about gaming. I don't game myself. I'm not... I've never been to a gaming location here in the state of Illinois, yet it is legal and approved by the state of Illinois, and it has an economic impact. I don't know through the city manager what the economic impact is throughout the city, but it has a strong economic impact for our community. As far as... Another alderman said that, "Not a bad idea, but I don't want it in my neighborhood. I don't want it in this location." We cannot be business discriminating. We cannot... to include a new license at Sullivan's Grocery Store, which was the old Eagle Store, which is the same location that Mr. Mason is asking for. They changed and violated the current law, and I'm thinking, well, okay, they changed the law for their own benefit. This is not being business-friendly, this is not being business concerned, it's more of a discrimination than not. As far as the issues, I know one of the council members feels strongly about gaming, I don't game myself, I'm not, I've never been to a gaming location here in the state of Illinois, yet it is illegal and approved by the state of Illinois, and it's an economic impact. I don't know through the city manager what the economic impact is throughout the city, but it's a strong economic impact for our community. As far as, another Alderman said that, not a bad idea, but I don't want it in my neighborhood, I don't want it in this location. We cannot be business discriminating, we cannot say, I'll put that business where I wanna put it. We had that same problem years ago, when they said there'll be no tattoo parlors in downtown DeKalb, now we have two of them. We cannot be the social and the moral police here, it's all business ethics, it has nothing to do with your personal agenda. Another one says it was kid problems. I think we need to give the kids a little more respect, they're not that stupid, if they're gonna cause a problem, they're not going to a location where there's gonna be monitors, there are adult monitors, also cameras. If they're gonna do a drug deal or a bad thing, they're gonna do it in the school parking lot, where they've been doing it for years anyway, so that's not a new problem, and it's not a discussion we even should consider. This location is two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet away, it's only a hundred-and-fifty as required by the state. Real quick, in economics, and as a businessman, I appreciate, there's approximately a hundred people a day goes to this laundromat, and I've talked, I don't know many of you had a chance to go down and talk to the Dollar General, but I did discuss down there, and one of their council, one of their cashiers said that they have a lot of people coming in to buy laundry soap and, and softener, and that they go to the laundromat. So if there's a hundred people a day, and they spend ten dollars in our neighborhood, either at Lee Hands or the Dollar General, a hundred people times a ten dollars is a thousand dollars a day, extra income, seven thousand dollars a week, twenty-eight thousand dollars a month, let's make it twenty-five, so it's easy for you to remember, twenty-five times twelve months is three-hundred thousand dollars of an economic impact to our community.
Try to wrap it up, Mike.
Okay, basically, the same would happen inside the laundromat. I, I just wanna say, this is, we cannot revert back to not being business-friendly, we have to continue to be business-friendly. Is there a place I would go? Absolutely not, but it doesn't matter, it's not me, it's the people we invite from out of town. I would like to thank the council for speaking and, and the city manager.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Dwayne Brown.
I think turning this down, Mason's request, is a big mistake. It's not about Mason, it's about attracting more commerce and business to the area. It's for letting people enjoy a relaxed atmosphere to do their laundry. We've noticed people drive as much as thirty to forty miles because of the unique equipment and cleanliness this laundromat provides. It helps DeKalb's realtors and businesses as customers shop in local stores and visit restaurants in DeKalb while they are washing their clothes. Gaming, wine, and beer go hand-in-hand, suds and duds, all around the country you see this. We will not be taking slot machine customers away from other businesses, because he will be creating his own customer base. The neighbors have nothing to worry about with, with this request. Children are not allowed into the laundromat without a parent or guardian. The six video gaming machines are hermetically sealed in their own room with their own door. Neighbors can't be in the laundromat unless they come to play slots or do laundry. They can't come to just drink because there are two attendants on duty. If the proposal is rejected, the city of DeKalb may lose thirty to forty thousand dollars per year. Jim Mason is putting DeKalb on the map with all the advertising on Comcast TV in DeKalb, Sycamore, South Elgin, Batavia, Glen Ellen, and North Naperville, Naperville, with his indoor golf and his laundromat. DeKalb has never had this exposure before, ever. Mason will be saying "All Roads Lead to DeKalb." Mason, with the purchase of this shopping center five years ago, has revitalized the south side of DeKalb, he has parking for three-hundred cars. I hope the council will support this request, as it will send a message to businesses and other entrepreneurs that DeKalb is open for business. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. John Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council members. I've known Jim for the last few years, and the last year, we've worked on a few other deals for some property, and anyways, he's taken me around to talk about the golf, and I've seen the, the laundromat, and I'm in the same boat. I'd like to see DeKalb grow, I think the diversity is good, so there's video gaming and other things to do, and I just, I think he's a very smart entrepreneur, and I'd love to see DeKalb to continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Todd Hanson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Todd Hanson, I've lived and worked in the Sycamore-DeKalb area all my life. I'm here supporting Jim Mason and addressing the expansion of the South Forest Street Laundromat. The Laundromat has been a successful business in the area for the last few years, it brings many people to the south side of town just to use the facility. Many locals even go out of their way to use that facility, because it's their favorite one in town. Sullivan's, the previous business which occupied this building, sold alcohol, tobacco, and lottery game tickets. Jim is only asking for two of the three, alcohol, gaming, but not tobacco. I believe this would benefit DeKalb in many ways, there's no other laundromat in the area like it. Jim is willing to put his resources into this facility to bring more people and revenue to the city of DeKalb. These local gaming facilities are in strip malls, bar restaurants, and even under apartment buildings. This seems like an ideal location, especially given the fact that when Jim submitted plans to the city, he asked about further expanding his laundromat, this being part of his vision. There's a lot of construction on the south side of DeKalb right now, and there will be for a few years. Many construction workers have relocated to the area and need laundry facilities. I could see many of them using and appreciating this facility. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope that you will consider and support this project, and let investors know that DeKalb, Illinois is open for business and willing to work with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, appreciate it. Okay, this, the last speaker that I have tonight, and I've seen this name somewhere, Jim Mason.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I went off the road the other day, and I have whiplash, so I'm not a hundred percent, but I wouldn't miss this for the world. What a country, where we can have this debate, and everybody is so civil. From what I'm seeing around the world, this is the place to be at DeKalb. I bought that shopping center down there five or six years ago, everybody told me I was crazy. They really told me I was crazy when I put a laundromat in there. I spent one-point-seven million dollars to build that laundromat at eighty-five-hundred square feet. The neighbors love it, we go in there, the neighbors love it. Now, there may be somebody that doesn't like it, 'cause they lost some money in the coins or whatever, I'll give it back to you. So the, I think it's all been said here tonight, we can't do any better than this. When I built the, the laundromat, I built the room that we're talking about tonight. The reason that I bought is because of Sullivan's had a liquor license, so I never thought that this would be a problem. I never thought that selling liquor, and we're not selling it by the bottle, we're selling it by the drink. So now we're having this discussion today, and I really appreciate my chance to be here. Linda's here tonight, I was thinking about it, I went into business in nineteen sixty-seven, and I paid over fifty million dollars in real estate taxes and a sales tax to do the deals that I do on a, and if you divide that out, it's about a million dollars a year, more now, less before. So I've done everything I can to do these things the right way. I'm not asking for TIF, I've never asked for TIF, I've never asked for any special breaks, and I'm not doing it tonight. So I wanted to, the idea to have the reconsideration, I thought it was appropriate for the community, 'cause this means a lot. Economic development comes in small packages and small package, or large packages. So I hope you folks, I'd like to see an eight oh vote for, for this tonight, and if anybody would like to ask me a question, why there's something wrong there, I will sure answer it. Should I stay at the podium, or go sit down?
We don't have a discussion back and forth.
Thank you.
There may be, there may be a question during the discussion, at which case, we would probably call you back up, Jim. Fair enough? Okay, now, let me try to clarify this for those who are watching, and perhaps clarify it for myself. We have a motion on the floor, and a second, to reconsider a request on a issue that was in a resolution that was defeated two weeks ago. Based on the reconsideration request from Mr. Mason, based on the reconsideration motion, and second, that we reconsider this, we will, after any further discussion, have a vote to reconsider. If this vote passes, we will then continue, after, and, and I'm saying this after having talked with our city attorney, John Donahue, we can then talk about the issue itself, whether or not we want to pass the resolution. Is that clear? Okay, so, if this motion were to be defeated tonight, the motion to reconsider, the issue is then dead. We cannot bring this back as an identical resolution. Is that correct, John?
The motion to reconsider dies, yes, you can no longer consider this tonight at this meeting.
Right.
But there's nothing that presents someone from bringing this up at a future board meeting and presenting it to the, to the council.
Right, but we could have no further discussion tonight.
Right.
If the motion to reconsider does not pass. Now, having said that, and trying to be clear, I'm gonna ask city manager Nicholas if he'd like to say anything further, if not, I'm gonna turn it over for a council discussion.
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay, a motion on the floor, a second, to reconsider. We've heard supportive comments on this resolution, and we've heard public participation. Now I'd open it up for any comments, questions, whatever. Alderman McAdams.
So it seems like this evening, we've tried to turn this into a referendum on Jim Mason. It's not. It's a referendum on the idea. The residents of the fifth ward hate it. They don't dislike it, they don't kind of dislike it, they hate it. And they don't hate it because it's Jim Mason, they hate it because there's alcohol near their school. I'm gonna be a firm no on this, as I have been the entire time, and I recommend that the rest of the board do the same.
Any further discussion? Alderman Morris.
So, I heard the idea of economics brought up a lot, and that was actually one of the reasons that I was not in support of this, that you don't hear people boasting, like, "Our city has so many video gaming establishments, it's such a robust community, and we have such a robust economy, and this is evidence of it." So I feel like having a video gaming establishment, any more of them, having more video gaming establishments, I am not in favor of it, because I think it harms our broader economy of the entire community, that's my primary concern. I really loved, I voted in favor of, and I think I expressed that concern back in August when we discussed this originally, because I thought it was really creative to add an alcohol license in there, and I thought that was, you know, creative and innovative business, and I liked the idea of doing new and different things to make things work, right? And so I can certainly support that and get behind that portion of the idea, but I don't think adding more video gaming establishments builds our community in any valuable way, economically speaking, and across the board for the community, so.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Fanouken.
So, you know, Alderman McAdams mentioned about the fifth ward residents not wanting alcohol near their school. Well, you know, at the Founder's Elementary there at, on Seventh Street, within a hundred yards, there's a gaming establishment that serves liquor. Twin Tavern is within a couple of hundred yards of Lincoln School, I believe it is, there on the south side, and even at Clinton Rosette, within a hundred yards of the school property, there's another video gaming establishment. So I think the fact that they hate the idea, but they already have several establishments in their ward that are that close to schools, so I do see it as maybe not liking Mr. Mason, since we have other establishments similar to that within the city.
Thank you, Alderman Fanouken. Any further comments? Alderman Faber.
So, I am opposed to the gaming aspect of it, I'm more opposed to the dedicated gambling parlors. My primary reason for voting against it during the last meeting again was also in support of the ward and the residents, and so I would continue to do that this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Faber. Alderman Perkins.
The, the thought of reconsideration is kind of an interesting one, I really hadn't considered, but, and it's, if nothing else, it's given a voice to, to folks. But I've, I've listened to the school board, the school board is not in favor of having this across the street from them, and that's my biggest concern, listen to the people in my ward, the people in my ward aren't in favor of it either. So that's what's, the whole thing is kind of an interesting civics lesson to me, but it really gets down to, literally, it's, it's gaming and alcohol right across the street from the middle school, and that's, that's my biggest issue.
Thank you, Alderman Perkins. Any other comments? We have a motion on the floor, a second, to give reconsideration to this request. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
No.
McAdams?
No.
Feubich?
No.
Faber?
No.
Morris?
No.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
I have five nay, two yea.
The motion to reconsider this resolution is defeated. We can have no more discussion on this particular request. Moving along to item number two, Resolution 2021-013, authorizing an amendum, an addendum for engineering services for Fair Graham and Associates, LLC, for the 2021 General Street Maintenance Program as part of the 2019 three-year services agreement, with a fee for FY 2021 not to exceed one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. I'd entertain a motion, please.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Faber, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor, we're in the third and final year of a three-year contract with, with Fair Graham to support our general street maintenance program this year, every year, and as required by IDOT, we have professionals who coordinate the actual day-to-day construction management, and that includes, doesn't include standing along the side of the road, it's, it's a very active role involved in measuring all of the quantities that are used, according to IDOT rules, they also do testing every day and sampling, and also do the coordination with multiple contractors that are involved in street maintenance. So this is, this is a full-time job for that period of time in which the program is, is occurring during the summer and fall, and beyond what our single engineer can do with all the other expectations that are upon him, so hence the contract, the, the fee proposed is one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, that includes also help with some of the design work as well. The, as I mentioned in the background, we're looking at about one-point-eight million dollars in overall work, and so this is well under, actually, the percentages that you usually figure when you're figuring a budget. It may be even less, we have some alternates, we're gonna be bringing the program to you, and you'll have a chance to say yea, nay, or modify it as we have in years past. If it happens that any of the alternates are not used, that will further reduce the cost, so we recommend this, we feel it's a fair contract.
Thank you, Bill. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. program grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority in the amount of $100,000 for the reimbursement of city expenditures related to the demolition of three condemned residential properties. Motion, please.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, sec, excuse me, Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Roll calls.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Bill, as you see, that resolution is unanimously approved. I didn't give you a chance to make any comments on that. Would you like to?
It's hard not to want to accept a $100,000 grant. I thought that would be pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, let's move right along now. We have three resolutions that follow here that I'm told we could approve in omnibus form. I'm going to read the first one, and then I'm going to read the second and third, if there's any desire to approve these, since they all relate to the public pension fund and our employee benefit plan. You've had a chance to look at some of the background information, and John, I take it we could approve these in omnibus form, is that correct?
The proper process would be to first pass a motion to group these three items together into an omnibus agenda.
Okay.
That'd be the first part. Then part two is to approve the entire omnibus agenda, and we would need unanimous consent of the council to do that.
Okay, good, good. I think that we would be proper, however, to have me read those three resolutions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a Resolution 2021-015, authorizing the addition of the Illinois Public Pension Fund Association, IPPFA, deferred compensation plan as an employee benefit, 457B Plan. Then we would have Resolution 2021-016 relating to the transfer of the Nationwide PHPZ contract to the Illinois Public Pension Fund Association, IPPFA, Retiree Healthcare Funding Plan and Trust, 501C9. And six, Resolution 2021-017 relating to a Retirement Healthcare Funding Plan, 115 Trust. So, I'd entertain a motion, if anyone is interested, to approve these in omnibus form.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we take these three resolutions before us and approve those, or at least consider those, in omnibus Any discussion? Bill, any comments that you'd like to make prior to the consideration of this in omnibus form?
Not trying to make things difficult, but there are companies here that have pieces of this. Some are going to remain with, the residual amounts will remain with the original company, and then as new contributions come in, it'll go to the company that is involved in the background for you tonight. And this is, this is not a new program, but some new vendors involved, and the new, the program has been with us for a while, and the council supported the idea of employees contributing voluntarily towards some of these savings plans, and we do incentivize these, have for a number of years, to try to encourage them to do so. And this actually arose, I believe, in the context of some negotiating that occurred maybe five or six years ago, when the city's commitment to fund, fully fund, or to significantly fund post-retirement healthcare was rescinded in favor of encouraging employees to save while they're working, and to put some money toward that as well, a match, and that's what this is all about.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we're voting on these three in omnibus form. It's been moved and seconded, and there is no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight aye.
So those considerations, Resolution 2021-014, and 015, and 016, unanimously supported and voted for in omnibus form, that's all we need to do at this point for approval. Is that correct, city attorney?
No, there's still part two. You created the omnibus agenda, you now need to move forward to approve all the items on the omnibus agenda.
Okay, very good.
And that requires, again, a unanimous vote.
Okay. So, I'd entertain a motion to approve these in omnibus form.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Those three resolutions are approved, and I swear by the end of my term, I am going to try to get to a point where I don't ask the darn many questions, but I want to get this thing right, okay? So let's move along. Number seven, Resolution 2021-018, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for capital funding from the Rebuild Illinois Capital Grant Program from February 8, 2021, through November 30, 2021, in the amount not to exceed $5 million. Motion, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. This is some more good news. So, back in November, you may recall, we were notified that we were awarded by IDOT $5 million in capital grant award funding to, that's to assist us with the work that needs to be done in preparation for constructing a transit center. The, about a million of that actually goes to the design and the vetting with community input, and about four million then can be used either as a local match for more money, and depending on the scope of the project, work can be used for actual construction. So, $5 million is a lot of money. The federal government has, has, even during the COVID pandemic, has found ways to pump money into public transit, and that's, we're the beneficiary of that right now, so we heartily recommend your support of this.
Okay, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Alderman Fanouken.
You know, I've been serving on the DSATs committee for more than, policy committee for about 10 years now, and we've been working towards the construction of this facility for a number of years, you know, through the Tiger grant applications and a few other things, and to see that some of the state and federal dollars finally coming, flowing into town to help us get going on this project is very gratifying, and it's really something that the city and the citizens of DeKalb and DeKalb County can look forward to.
Well, that's for sure, Bill. I know I've been on the DSATs board here in the four years that I've been mayor, sitting alongside you, and I tell you, we got to make a special shout out to Marcus Cox, our transit manager, for his work on this, on this and other grant proposals that either he's worked on, we've been successful, or you're continuing to work on a few, are you not, Marcus? Good. So Alderman Verbic.
Yeah, this is great for the near term. Again, as we discussed on this topic our last occasion, certainly my concern continues to be developing this in a floodplain. In addition to that, I don't know that we've really put together the long-term obligations or liabilities of the city of DeKalb. So, from a standpoint of maintaining the facility, paying the electric bill, all of those kinds of things, I don't want us to get too far in until we have all of these things figured out so that we don't come back to the taxpayers and say, "Oh, by the way, we need to ask you for more money to support this." Because if that was the case, then we would want to ask them to vote on this versus just saying, "Here's your, here's your bill," so.
Thank you, Alderman Verbic. City manager Nicholas.
The points are well taken, and were heard bit in November, here and a lot of clear tonight, I'm sure Marcus does as well. And so, part of the design, it isn't just they start work now and start throwing floor plans together and so forth. This is all part of the discussion that we have to have, and it's a show-me opportunity for us to bring you what we consider to be a plausible construction project that will serve those transit needs, and if you say, "I don't like the place, and I don't like the, ultimately, I don't like, I don't want to spend the money on that," then that's the council's prerogative.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, again, if I may, as a follow-up, I believe that most of the financial responsibilities will fall on the DSATs, to the federal and state continuing grants that they get, and that just the city acts as the fiscal agent for that agency. So I think that, while Alderman Verbic's concerns are true, but I think that he just needs to be aware of where the funding sources for that truly are.
Thank you. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Believe it or not, we have no ordinances, either second reading or first reading, to discuss tonight, so we'll move right along to reports and communications, allowing our city council members, our city clerk, and our city manager to make any comments that they'd like to. We'll start with Carolyn Morris, our first ward alderman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention the homelessness topic that J.J. Webb brought up. I definitely was in communication with a couple of different people this week who had significant concerns about the dropping temperatures and the homeless being outside in those overnight, especially. So, when I realized that the warming centers weren't over, weren't open overnight, I reached out on Facebook and suggested to the church community that, you know, maybe they should, maybe they had an opportunity to step in and help out in this short notice. So, I had two churches respond that are both actually in my ward, and what they ended up doing, there had been other people in the community working on this at the same time and a different, at a different angle, and what those people had arrived at was a decision to put up people in hotel rooms. So, that was the, that was the final situation. And so the churches wanted to come alongside that and support that decision and support in that way. So, that's, that's the state right now, as I understand it, and I spoke with a reporter about it today and got a little more information, too, about the existence of, I think, two or one, I could be wrong, at least one overnight shelter space in Sycamore, which is the police department. So I just wanted to fill everyone in on that so that they can share it, and so we know what the situation is. And what I've seen, from what I've seen, Maureen Buntain seems to be the public contact who's accepting funding to put people in hotel rooms at this time, and I'll let you guys know if I hear anything new.
Yeah, Carolyn, when you reached out to me at home, I think it was Thursday, I had just sent a note, just a reminder, I guess, to Jeff McMaster, our fire chief, and Bill Nicholas, our city manager, asking about the warming centers, and of course, we did have it on the website. I want to commend Scott Zach, our new management analyst, for really upticking our social media presence, and I know we had those stories in the media, and so this is a concern, especially at this time of the year, and I appreciate your doing, your part to call attention to the fact that, you know, we should perhaps have a more expansive network of organizations and folks who want to, who want to assist those who are, those who are homeless. So, thank you. Bill Fanouken, our second ward alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, for several months, I've been, you know, zooming in rather than being in person because of the threat of COVID, and as, you know, the COVID vaccine has started to become more and more available, I'm very gratified to that. In fact, I am scheduled to receive my first shot tomorrow morning, and I am very grateful to Northwestern Medicine reaching out and making it available to me, and hopefully anybody who has the opportunity to get the vaccine takes advantage of that. Again, in the meantime, please maintain your social distance, wear your mask, avoid crowded gatherings, and wash your hands as often as possible, and, you know, maybe we're beginning to see the light at the end of the tunnel in this pandemic, and hopefully we'll return to some semblance of normalcy sometime in the next couple of months. Thank you.
You know, thank you, Alderman Fanouken. You know, I think the system is working, although many would consider it sort of a catch-as-catch-kin kind of scenario with the folks waiting for their vaccines. A week ago, Friday night, my wife and I received a notice from Northwestern Medicine on individual emails that we could get ours through Northwestern. We had already registered individually through the health department. We heard from Northwestern, we got the shot in the arm last Thursday at Kishawaki Hospital. Today, I get one, Ging gets one at home, from the health department, saying that they have, I think, the convo center Wednesday and a couple of other places within the health department system giving vaccines. So, as Alderman Fanouken, as you had indicated, be patient. The key is just to register, whether you're not, you register through a pharmacy, through a, the health department, through Northwestern Medicine, if you are a patient of the clinic or the, or the hospital system, and I think you will get notified, but I think what they're, what they've tried to do is to work with our first responders, our healthcare, our educational communities, and some of us old folks like myself. So, thank you, Alderman Fanouken. Alderman Smith, third ward.
I received a lot of calls on snow, especially people not moving their cars, really adheres to, you know, is a hindrance to our plows. Please move your cars when the plows are coming around. These guys are working a lot of hours. And also shovel your sidewalks. I mean, we've got a lot of people that just are not shoveling sidewalks, and people are capable, and if not, go help your neighbor, you know, the elderly that can't do it, get out there and shovel the walks for them. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Alderman Perkins, fourth ward.
No report.
And from our fifth ward, Scott McAdams.
No report.
And sixth ward, Mike Verbic.
And on the opposite end, Alderman Smith, I wanted to send many thanks to those in Ward Six that are doing a great job of keeping their sidewalks clear, and have been very impressed with the weather we've had and temperatures, so thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Mike. And Alderman Verbic, excuse me, Alderman Faver, our seventh ward alderman.
No report.
Thank you. Moving right along.
not, go help your neighbor, you know, the elderly that can't do it. Get out there and shovel the walks for them. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Alderman Perkins, fourth ward.
No report.
And from our fifth ward, Scott McAdams.
No report.
And sixth ward, Mike Verbic.
And on the opposite end, Alderman Smith, I wanted to send many thanks to those in Ward Six that are doing a great job of keeping their sidewalks clear, and have been very impressed with the weather we've had and temperatures. So thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Mike. And Alderman Verbic, excuse me, Alderman Favor, our seventh ward alderman.
No report.
Thank you. Moving right along now to Alderman, or excuse me, City Clerk Fizikas. Any report tonight?
No report.
Thank you. And finally, our city manager, Bill Nicholas.
Two quick items. Why not know? The very soft, fluffy stuff we're having now, as opposed to what we were having about a week ago, came in at about three to four inches, depending on how you measure. Plows will be out. Here's how we're going to attack it tonight. Because it's so light, and because we have been working a lot of hours, and we know there's another couple inches coming around midnight possibly, we're going to make sure that there's a path on every street down the middle, a couple passes, but we're not going to plow in the driveways tonight. We'll come in in the morning and just make one pass to clean the curb. And this will be light, so it won't be as bad to shovel. And we've all had that experience more than once in the last couple of weeks. Andy gave me that plan late this afternoon, Andy Rye, and I think it's an appropriate plan. We'll cut down some of the overtime, although they're going to be coming in very early in the wee hours of the morning to get going. And then they'll go all day tomorrow. So if that's agreeable to you, I gave him the authorization.
Thank you, Bill, and kudos to Andy Rye and his staff at Public Works for this.
One last thing.
Yes.
A consensus here is sufficient. The airport board and the airport manager have been kicking around the need of replacing our de-icer at the airport. And this is an old machine that, I don't know what it is, 25, 30 years old. They've been patching it together, keeping it going. Just at the last meeting, we were talking about how it's finally that the dust... There's no amount of small repairs that are going to make any difference. These things, brand new, are somewhere north of $300,000. There's $100,000 in the capital budget, the vehicle, excuse me, the vehicle replacement fund this year. We didn't want to have to spend that, but we were not thinking that we could find anything cheap or well. The company that's been repairing ours and keeping it going is also, it's a bigger company. They also go out and they go to auctions and so forth. They found one that they feel is a gem that's just being unloaded by a larger airport, doesn't... And can work readily, afford to turn these over in a regular timeframe, for $25,000, which exceeds my authority by $5,000. And if we don't do something, by Wednesday, it's gone. So they have basically a handshake. They'll sit on it until tomorrow, and I'd like your blessing to proceed with it. This is a reputable company, and they know what they're looking at, and they've kicked the tires and done a lot more than that, looked at the engine and so forth. And at that price, I think it's agreeable, and Councilmember Favor has been sitting through these conversations and may have something you want to add as well.
Are you asking for a motion that we approve your...
Well, it's not only a... I know we can do a motion, but a consensus would be adequate just so I can get a purchase order through tomorrow.
Okay, so a consensus that you can...
We have a very ferocious clerk who wants to see that purchase order, and it's got to be based on something. This is the something I'm looking for.
Okay. Is there consensus that we would allow, in this case, City Manager Nicholas to exceed his spending limit by $5,000 to $25,000 for the de-icer?
Thank you.
Bill, you got it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
We have no executive session tonight. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight aye.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.